All right, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, December 7, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. If you could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, introduction to board members. To the far left, I have Paul Imatucci, Jerry Graybill, myself, Michael LaRue, Phil Roy, Les Bodwell, and Rick Rains. I also have Irish Griffith, the code enforcement officer, Terry Wilson, the assistant to coding and planning, and Hannah Watson from SMPDC. All right, first is the public hearing. We'll open that for integrity, construction, conditional use, 500 Portland Street, R72, Lot 17, Zone RCI. Do you want to just come up and just give us a brief description?
Hello again.
Hello again.
Good evening. We're just seeking a conditional use for the building over at 500. Looking to put in a cabinetry shop. It was never outlined in the original plan, so we just got to identify the specific use.
Okay. Now, if there's anyone that wants to make a comment. So we just opened up the public hearing for the 500 Portland Street, so if you guys have any comments, now is the time. Okay. Okay, well, seeing how no one else is here, so I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
I will second.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor? Next is the public comment.
Good evening. Tom Wright, 96 Sumatera Road. I was unable to make the meeting when you had the introduction to the community garden space. I was out of town at the time, and my laptop wouldn't send the email out I wanted you guys to all read before that meeting, so here I am tonight. Just want to give a background on that piece of property. It's a piece of property up behind the police station and the fire station, the site of the old Esterbrook School. It was when the Huzzy School was built, and the school system no longer needed that school. The town acquired it again, moved the police station into the lower part, the dooring section of it. And after that, the rest of it just sat there. The building itself, the Esterbrook School itself, was used for storage, for public works. And the police and the fire used it for their training. It was quite a mess in there. But as far back as 12 or 13 years ago, the Downtown Vision Committee, which was the precursor to the Envision Borough Committee, were holding a series of meetings to identify properties in the downtown core area that would be vital to, you know, developing the downtown and revitalizing it. And that was one of the places that was identified right off. A lot of different discussions about what was going on there. We had actually, the town had actually entered into an agreement with an organization to put assisted living apartments there. I believe the 24 apartments were planned to be built there, but they didn't get their funding, and that fell through. It sat there for a while longer, and that's when Envision Borough got incorporated and started looking, and that piece was still looked at for different uses. Eventually, the town voted to put the fire station on that property. And during that process, we recognized that there was a piece, that piece out behind there was going to be vacant. And at the time, it was, I think, Mike, you were on the board at that time. There's quite a series of meetings we had discussing what was to go there. Some of the things that were discussed on going there was a skateboard park, a dog park, music festival area, things like that, which I argued at the time, we're putting the station up, that we should wait a few years and decide after we saw what was happening there and how things were working before we decided what to do with that space. I had originally proposed we put solar panels there, but that was shot down. When Amrita decided that, you know, she'd like to start community gardens, that was one of the first places I looked at and decided to, you know, investigate that piece. I think it works well, as you can see from what I just said, that the town has always intended to use that piece of property for something. And as I said, the community garden seems like the least intrusive use that we can put there to not affect the police and fire station and their business that goes on. We did have a meeting with the police chief and colleague from the fire department. They raised a bunch of issues that I know that Dennis and Amrita are working through, and hopefully we can get this all straightened out. So I believe your hearing is on January 4th is when it's scheduled, and I'll be back at that time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
As a follow-up to that, Irish, is it on our, just on our plans to ensure that the police chief is available for that public hearing? Because I know he brought up some concerns, and I just want to make sure we are able to. He put them in a letter, but I would like the opportunity for him to speak to his concerns before the board so we can address those.
I can send him a specific, an email specifically inviting him and requesting that he attend.
I think there'd be a lot of value. He brought up some valid concerns from a law enforcement perspective, and I think we do have to, if we could find compromise and address those concerns, I think we owe it to him as a public servant of our town to do that for him.
I will, I will do that, but if you don't mind, what I'd like to do is also include Chief Plant on that, to give them both the opportunity to come here and speak. I don't want to just single one half of the lot out and leave the other out. So I'll send them both an email requesting that they come speak and address the board.
Awesome. Thank you.
No problem.
Next is approval of minutes.
Oh, is there a public comment?
Oh, yeah, if you wanted.
Jeremy, if it's about what you and I have been emailing about, you need to, okay, okay. I was going to say, that needs to wait until they're back here.
Yeah, of course.
Just making sure.
Well, there's one going where it was blank there. It says approval of minutes, there's just nothing, no minutes.
Right, I took the date off.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm running on battery. I'm going to read you guys a couple of things, so if this dies while I'm reading to you, I'll plug it in. I wanted to start before I even, what? So you know why I'm here. We've talked, you folks have talked about getting public input, and I think traditionally, before even, I think James was involved or chairing Envision, Envision's done a lot of this sort of thing, talking about the town and planning and communication with, you know, citizens and the town. So we had already had a subcommittee formed thinking about this stuff, and so there's thoughts I'll share, but in the next week, I know we have another week, right, till the 15th, to get stuff in. So we'll produce a document, and James has been working with us on some of this as well, so, but before I even get into that, I just want to say to all of you that the last meeting at three and a half hours, like the extraordinary effort, where's the camera, for everybody here to be a volunteer and put in that time, it's just, I was, I was in Vermont when that happened, in Burlington, that's why I wasn't here, and I listened to that meeting in the car from Burlington, Vermont to Portsmouth, New Hampshire, and just made it. So it's extraordinary.
The fact that you didn't fall asleep.
It was riveting, man.
And it was cut, and we ran out of recording time on it, too. It went longer than.
I want to just interrupt briefly.
Yeah.
The deadline of December 15th, that's not like do or die for everything. That is just for consideration for this next round of updates, but people can continue to send things in.
Sure, of course, but we're looking at the June vote and.
Well, just in case the people are still listening at home, I don't want them to think if they don't get them in here at times.
Yeah, it's rolling submissions, obviously.
Exactly.
But we're still trying to, you know.
Just clarifying.
There's two votes a year.
Yep.
Mysteriously, they change every year, I hear, but yeah, there are two votes a year, so we're trying to make the next one. So I just wanted to say, regardless of where we all fall in our opinions about life and our town and everything, the dedication and the, everybody's heart is in the right place, and that's clear, and so, just worth mentioning, three and a half hours, man, that's incredible. So I wanted to read you a couple of things that we would love to look at putting in the mix coming up, and obviously, this is something that, you know, our subcommittee that is at the moment sort of called Sustainability, but also maybe something else because it's nobody loves the name, and Envision Borough give different sets of ideas, plus stuff we're working with James on. I've also been in touch with Lee Jay, who gave me a fabulous connection with the planner in Auburn, who's, and they've done some fabulous stuff. So I'm trying to put what I can together for next week, and then, you know, some of it will be rolling. One of the things we've talked about is a larger lot size in general. We would like to make ours at least equal to our surrounding towns. R3 at the moment is 90,000 square feet, North Berwick's equivalent, the farm and forest, it's 160,000 square feet, and South Berwick, R4, R5, is 120,000 square feet. So it'd be nice to kind of set us up with even footing, making Berwick less desirable to developers in that way, so that we're not the town that's sitting here with, you know, as a sitting duck, with our neighboring towns, you know, situated differently and maintain some of our more rural character. We would like to enact, look at enacting a growth ordinance that restricts the number of new residential building permits issued per year, restricting the number of homes built in individual development to three per year, limit the number of new developments started per year, and set a percentage of permits aside each year so that developers can't grab them all, and they're made available to individuals who are building outside of development. Again, I'm, you don't have to write everything down, I'll get it to you, but make the permits expire after a certain number of days so that developers can't just come in, grab them all up at the start of the year, as used to happen. The idea is to slow development and allow the town time to adjust, grow in a slow and steady manner, gives the town and school system the ability to make changes more gradually. Also allows time to see and mitigate the potential impacts to our infrastructure, water, sewer, environment, et cetera. We would love to look at a right-to-farm law to protect both current and future agriculture in the town, protecting farms and farmers, and alerting people moving in that they're moving into a rural community and that there are some less-than-pleasant aspects of agriculture that they will have to learn to live with, as we all do in moving to a less-than-pleasant. When we protect prime farmland as part of developments or subdivisions, it has to be maintained, we hope, as a single accessible piece, not broken up into little pieces that farmers would not have access to. Also put a requirement in, we hope, that the developments/subdivisions are responsible for maintaining that land in the current state. Field must be maintained as a field to keep it available and open for agriculture. That's from Envision Borough. This is from our subcommittee, open, whatever we're, at the moment called Sustainability, but it's sort of agriculture, open space, rural protection subcommittee. We're looking at asking to increase development fees, higher in certain zones and lower in others. Right now, they're the same across the board. Increase density in some areas, and protect prime land by making minimum lot sizes much larger, as we talked about, not paying for infrastructure in areas that could be preserved and not developed. Apply impact fees to areas with prime farmland that goes to acquisition of farmland of state right significance. This is something that we've talked a lot about with James, that I think he'll be helping articulate, but a transfer of development rights, do you all understand how that would work? It's, you sell your development rights in a rural area and send them to higher-density areas, much like a conservation easement. For example, an owner in R3 sells development rights to someone in R2 or R1, the owner of R3 does not develop the land. I mean, there's a lot of complicated stuff around this, but these are all good things to start keeping an eye on and thinking about in terms of, you know, comprehensive plan following the surveys, what the citizens are asking for, basically. Recognizing the difference between families and developers, creating a tiered system that has tighter regulation for larger cumulative landowners, the different rules and incentives minimize the impact of development on the town. Adjust zoning between railroad tracks and zoning transition on Route 4. Commercial and industrial lots could and should be developed in a way that creates wildlife corridors if possible, as we talked about, and we talked about that in our group meeting the other night. That's my laptop dying. The rest is stuff that we have started to articulate with James, so I will work with him to prepare a document that includes everything I just blew through very quickly, as well as more specific stuff that's actually deals with what we already have and how we would like to look at adjusting it, so it's not just sort of fire-hosing ideas, but placing them within the ordinance. Thank you, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate everything you all do.
Thank you, Jeremy. All right, so no approval of minutes, so we're moving to Old Business Integrity Construction Conditional Use, 500 Portland Street, R72, Lot 17, Zone RCI. Okay, thank you.
I'm assuming there were no issues on the sidewalk?
No issues with the building.
No, I think that one of the issues that was pointed out to us by code was that the building currently does not have a certificate of occupancy, so cannot be occupied.
Yeah, I would argue we're not occupying the building at this time.
But I think for us to approve, does it have to have a certificate of occupancy, or?
Well, that would be a condition of approval.
Or a condition of approval. Okay.
I'm comfortable with that being a condition of approval.
Okay.
So we're looking for a motion to find the application complete with conditions? Is that?
I thought we found it complete last time.
We are approving with conditions.
I think approved with conditions, yeah.
Yeah. Now, is that the only condition we want to condition? Is the CO?
That's all that I found. It seemed to.
Do we have the, from the sidewalk, you mentioned about the fire alarm system being put in, and that'll be part of the occupancy, right?
Everything, so they have, they have to comply with the state electrical inspector, which Brian will send me something from that. Chief Plant and I had walked through and met with the owner and the applicant. They know what they need to do for all the things for fire, and then, once I have those two things, and obviously, his desk collector needs to be finished collecting, hooked together. Once all of that's done, then I can go through and issue the actual certificate of occupancy, but they won't get that until those items are tended to. Those are all tied into the CO.
You don't have to spell it all out there.
Nope. You don't have to spell, if you put it CO, then it all lands in my lap, and they have to put all the pieces together, just like any other commercial business would.
Makes it easy for us, then?
Yes, we try to make it easy for the board to.
That's why I was asking.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure.
I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Conditional use.
Conditional use application for this property at 500 Portland, pending certificate of occupancy and code finding them up to date. So, yeah, I think that's it.
Can I just ask a question on that before you? So do we have to put that as an addition, certificate of occupancy? I mean, that's pretty standard procedure, isn't it, that you get approved for a use, then you get a certificate of occupancy?
I think the board is doing it, I think the board does it as a kind of a clarification, because I think most of the places that come through here that are conditional use are already constructed, or.
They already have the CO.
They already have a CO of some kind.
It's kind of semantics, but it just seems like a, you know, if you, we approve a subdivision, right, and then they don't build until they get a building permit, but we don't make it a condition of the approval to get a building permit.
But the, the difference with that is that a building permit is not already issued and required to be closed out, the, when you do a subdivision. With a subdivision, they're approving the concept of the use of the land, which then means you have to comply with all the building permits.
Isn't that what we're doing now?
For this particular issue, this is just approving the use of the building, in a building that is unlike most of the others that have come before this board in my time here. Actually, I think this is the only one that hasn't had a CO as of yet, so I think it's the intent of the board to just clarify that, while the use may be an approved use, that it can't actually be used until the CO is issued.
Okay.
Am I correct in that, Mr. Chair?
I will second your motion.
Further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Thank you. Moving on.
I had a half a second thought where I was like, why isn't Rick voting yes? Because Rick wants to get fired.
All right, so New Business, Rick is now coming back on. Approval and adoption of sidewalk protocol.
I'm going to make a motion that we approve, but I would like to make a comment, two comments, actually. I think this has always been very clear to us all, and I think the nexus of this was our sidewalk for the gas station, which I found to be very peculiar that we had it being recorded and televised. We've never done that on a sidewalk previously, so I just, that was peculiar.
I can speak to that.
Okay, may I finish?
Yes.
The other issue was, there was a gentleman who was in a butter. He was obviously having a hard time with mobility, and he was not able to walk the property, so I did depart from the group to go meet that gentleman on his property line and ensure that he did receive an a butter's notice, and he knew why we were there, and that was the extent of my conversation. So I do, I understand this, and I just want to make sure that my actions were not misconstrued in any way, but I do believe as a board, it is incumbent upon us to, I know we can't discuss the particulars of the project, but to be welcoming and serve the people we have sworn to serve, and that was the purpose of my outreach to that gentleman. So if somebody misconstrued my actions, I'm a big boy, come talk to me. I don't think this is necessary, but I will vote to make a motion that we accept this.
Two, well, actually, I can kind of say three things, two things. So first, to why it was recorded and televised, that was a choice by BCM for, because with this project having been such, obviously, it's a very emotionally charged, is a good way, I think, to put it, kind of thing that's before the town. It was a choice by BCM to attend, record it, televise it, because with, in light of the weather, obviously, as you saw, minimal turnout.
Was that their choice, or were they directed to record?
As far as I know, it was their choice. They would have to speak to that, but they.
It's just peculiar that that has never happened with another project in my time, so it's just seemed very peculiar, that's all.
I can tell you that, it's, yeah, it's not a typical project, it's not a typical thing, but I can tell you that I have seen videos of sidewalks on the BCM channel, so it appears they have done this a few times.
Okay.
Second, I was there at the sidewalk, I never saw you go talk to the neighbor. Terry was not there at the sidewalk, Terry is the one that wrote this up, so there would be no reason to think it was you, that genuinely was because a former, a former planning board member, Nicole Facto, came in and said something to us about how she was under, she had been aware that we were not necessarily doing things properly, the optimal way, and the way we should at sidewalks, so.
I guess it's just a coincidence, but I certainly wanted to address my actions if it was my actions.
Appreciate the transparency, but it certainly was actually in works, what, probably about three weeks before, I think.
Okay.
Because she brought us cookies.
It also helps to understand that it makes sense to keep the group together so that we're all hearing the questions and that the questions are directed to one person. I need this document myself, because I broke half of these protocols myself this evening.
I was going to say myself, I'm quite guilty of wandering off and talking with groups, so.
And we did.
So just to, just to clarify, is it within, is it within the scope of a board member, right? If we see somebody who clearly has a physical impediment that precludes them from being able to go on the sidewalk, is it appropriate just to assert and say, did you get your a butter's notice, and are you aware of the public hearing?
I think that's a question for either Mike or Hannah to answer, because.
I just want to make sure that's appropriate, because I feel like it's our, it's our job to be available to the public, isn't it?
Maybe it's more appropriate if Irish or I do that, and you stay with the board.
Mike.
I'd ask Hannah on that.
Okay.
I think.
Hannah, do you want to weigh in on that one?
Um, I would say it's probably most appropriate for the chair to do that, or if another board member were to just say, hey, Mike, I'm, I just spoke with this gentleman, or whatever, but make sure the chair knows at the time that it's happening, if he isn't the one to do it.
Okay, I appreciate the clarification.
No, we all get spanked at the same time with this one fellow, you're not alone.
I can handle it.
I want her off, too, so when I was reading it, I was like, I'm guilty, I'm guilty, guilty.
Just as a general comment on this, after going through X number of sidewalks over the years, people always are walking up to you, giving their opinion of this and that and the other thing, and my canned response to all of them is, we're just here to look. The public hearing is a place to talk, and in the intervening time, if you have issues that you want addressed, send an email to planning, and, so that it can be brought up, but we can't do it here. So that's kind of the canned pitch that I give everybody, so that we can't discuss it there.
I like that, Paul, because, you know, I can see myself getting caught in those rabbit holes, where, you know, you want to be friendly and open, and, you know, you're a member of the community, so you want, you know, you don't want to be like, I can't talk to you, but, you know.
And the thing is, too, this is, this document is also going to help guide future planning board members that may, as people may come on and off of the board, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, there's stuff here that I may not have even thought about.
Exactly, and I didn't.
And urging the public to save their comments for the public hearing makes, ensures that everybody hears it, because it's televised, so.
I would, I would like to add that if we, this would be a penalty of a gray area on a sidewalk. We're supposed to follow these rules, we all break the rules, but we're asking to set rules, and that's fine, but I think the public also needs to be informed what's okay and what's not okay, so I'm wondering if a very short blurb is given to the chair and said at the beginning of every sidewalk, this is why we're here, this is what's okay, this is what's not okay. It might take away some of those needing to tell them, you know, to send an email or whatever, just so that we're consistent in setting our rules so that we follow them better, and then hoping that the public will follow them.
We set the right expectations.
Just a quick rule, when you start the sidewalk, you know.
Okay.
Because I know you don't have enough to.
I'll print him, I'll print him a little card.
What the expectations are, everybody there, what we're doing there, what the public's doing there, when they can.
Yeah, totally agree.
I like it.
You send out a butter's notices, right?
Yes.
That to go in that, so they know.
As well, I don't give a caution, saying sometimes they get in a butter's notice and they read the first paragraph about what's it about, and then they just forget the rest.
Sometimes they're not even a butter's.
Right, exactly.
But at least they've been told, so.
I agree.
Yeah.
Yep.
We could also add it to the butter's notice with a line like, if you, in bold letters, if you plan to attend, please read. Have that.
Communication is key.
And they'll make the sidewalks a lot faster, which, no offense to any of y'all, because I love hanging out with y'all, but we freeze. We just want to get in and out there.
I hate to say this, but you could take it one step further. On the butter's notice, you have like a section, if you have comments or stuff, put it on this and mail it in, or whatever, after the sidewalk, to make sure. it in, or whatever, after the site walk, to make sure that they get answered. You give them a place to put their thoughts down, instead of verbalizing it. We do that in a lot of what I do.
If I can get it all on one page, more than willing to do that, it's not a bad idea.
Yeah, I'm just saying. It works out good, because what I do, we do the same thing when we do stuff.
It's like a cat attack.
Hannah's entertaining us.
I want to see the kitty's face, though. Anyway, yeah, I'll see if I can tweet those. That's all great suggestions.
Yeah.
So, based on that, I would make a motion that we approve the protocol and adopt it. I will second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next is land use ordinance amendments.
I would like to say, thanks for your efforts for getting the public engagement going, and getting this stuff back in from the public is, one, it makes our job easier, two, it's what we're supposed to be doing, so I like that. One piece that I have a concern, and I think the last time we went through this, there are certain left end, right end limits of what we can do with land use ordinance, so before we digest each of these one for one, would it be appropriate for either the attorney, or for James, or somebody who's better versed in what is and is not allowed, to help us digest these, so we're not wasting, and I, I don't want to use the term wasting time, but expending effort on something that is not within the realm of possibility.
Spending effort on something that belongs to somebody else's wheelhouse.
Correct.
Yeah, because some things are just opinions, they're statements.
Part of it, part of what is, I think, and surprise Terry, surprise James, if you're listening, part of what I want to do is I want to take all of these comments. We've set the deadline for the 14th for this go around of, you know, for anything that's going to be considered for this next election. Anything we receive after that will be considered, but for a different time. And that gives us time to put all this stuff together and, like, group it, because there are a lot of things, like all these with like an extra light sidewalk kind of things. Those are more of a public works thing. However, I've refrained from making any sort of comment like that, because, quite frankly, I'd rather be doing the weeding out of the comments and directing what needs to to public works, or, or what have you, or like the 236 stuff, if it's on the wrong side of 236 to the state, and at least get that input from the residents. But you're right, we need to have, we need to have this be stuff that you, you know, are able to work on.
I picked up on the same thing, there was a fair amount of things that...
Just are not in our purview.
Is not in our wheel.
So, would you guys like to put these on hold for right now, instead of having your coffee, instead of having your coughing code officer read all these into...
Yes, I would, but also, just to further clarify, that we had had, a couple of months ago, prior to the, the last election, we had had a joint meeting with the select board, and at least on one issue in particular, which is now in front of us, we had all decided here, together as a group, select and planning what we said would be the criteria for that, after which it went to select to get put on the ballot and got changed. So, I'm just wondering, what's our job here? I mean, why do we go through that when, when it's going to get changed anyway? Because I thought we had agreement on a few things that just did not translate onto the ballot, so they did get changed during the select meeting. And if that's their purview, fine, but why are we doing this?
Well, I think that, I think that our job is to make a recommendation to the select board, and the select board and the town attorney tweaks it and tunes it and puts it on the ballot, so...
This wasn't tweaked.
Completely changed.
This was changed.
Substantially.
So I think, one thing that I would say, though, a little bit off of that, but in reference to tabling this, you know, this, this is stuff people did what we asked them to do and put this before us, and to table this whole document until the next meeting puts it out of the deadline.
No, no, I, I mean, no, it's not going to be, they got until December 14th to submit them to, to us. It's, I'm just talking about tabling the, reading them into record, and we can get them all, because this isn't all of them, these are just what you've received since last meeting. So, we're compiling them, like, all of them together.
Okay, I just, I just...
Because what we have by...
The people are actually putting the effort in to put them in front of us, I want to, I want to deal with that.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
The one thing I want to...
The thing is, the thing is, is that the deadline is for them to send them in so that you guys can then start working on what, incorporating them into the actual verbiage of the ordinance. You got to pick which pieces of the pie out of this, so to speak, you're going to be working on what you feel is something that you can make recommendations for, something the board itself is in agreement on making changes, that you guys can discuss whether you're going to, to handle it or not. So, what I'm suggesting is absolutely not, like, tabling it until it's out of, out of questions, but they still have time to submit further things. But we stopped the submittal, so we stopped the submittal on the 13th to, for this particular cutoff, just so that we would have time to put everything together, get it to you guys, and you guys would have time to digest all the information, and you each can pick out what you feel is important out of this to, to hit for. And I'm glad you brought it up and asked questions, because we don't want you just looking at it and saying, yep, want to deal with this now, yep, want to deal with this now, everything else just goes in the round file. You know, you could, you guys can, are fully capable of saying, all right, you know what, we think we've got a whole ton of good suggestions here, we're going to tackle these six things, and we're going to put these six things off, and they'll end up on the next, potentially the next ballot after this one. It's just to get this, this L U O update stuff is going to be on every agenda from here until we're gone and somebody else says, we're not doing this no more, you know.
What's the deadline for getting things on the ballot for June?
For anything that's submitted to us right now, they have to get it to us for you guys to review by the 14th.
No, I mean, so...
For us, the board, to get it on the ballot.
Well, no.
Well, it goes to the select.
February. Let's work backwards, we have a vote in June. The things that are on that ballot...
Yeah, we have a, we have a, do you want to go?
Is it like, February, April?
The paper?
Yeah, Patty, Patty has a, a sheet.
How many months before?
Yes. I want to say it's either late February or early April, or March.
Could be three, could be three months prior.
Yeah, yeah, because it has to go to the town attorney, it has to go to the selectmen.
We have a little bit of time to work through these things, until the selectmen make their final...
We have about four or five meetings.
So, here's, here's what's going to happen at this exact moment. Terry is running next door, because when Patty gave us all the deadlines, we requested all the deadlines, and Patty and Terry worked it backwards, like you said. Now, she had it hung on the wall, I'm hoping she still does, can't guarantee that.
Hannah's got something.
But she's going to check it.
Hannah?
It's February 15th.
Is when it's got to go to the select board?
No, that's...
It says, February 15th, 2024, paperwork of proposed ordinance changes due to town manager from boards, committees, and department heads, February 20th, presentation to board of selectmen by boards, committees, and department heads, February 20th, public discussion at selectman meeting, and then so on.
So we have three meetings.
So would it be reasonable, as, so we come out of this meeting with an action that, that we're going to hold ourselves accountable to? I, I read through these recommendations, and I, I, I think they're great. What I, what I don't want to get into is the quandary we got into last time, where we're like, yeah, this is a good idea, and we're told that that's not in our wheelhouse. Case in point, you know, a lot of the stuff that was brought up by Envision Berwick, and their input with regard to larger lot sizes, restricting building permits, and a limited number of permits issued to control growth. I'd be a huge advocate of that. I, I think it's a good idea. Is that within our purview, and is it legal? And that, those are the questions that I have, because otherwise, if it's not legal, and it's not within our purview, then we're just spinning our wheels. And I just want to make sure our...
All of those things are in the purview of the planning board.
They are, okay.
They are. They are also being worked on by other departments and other committees, and James is working with those committees to try and, you know. And I was told today the comprehensive plan is, appears, appears to be on track for vote for 2020, June 2025 election. So, and that's part of why...
June 2025.
Yes.
2025, because they're working through the, actually, I think they're pretty much hitting the growth section of that, and there is some, as you said, there's some, some concerns about what may or may not be legal for the town to do, and we certainly don't want to trample anybody's legal rights, because that's absolutely the exact opposite of what we want to do.
I think, I think that's what, one, one person submitted a, an email, basically saying that, that, you know, when, when you do things like that, you know, you devalue somebody's property.
Right.
Yeah, mister...
For me, for me, my thing about, you know, the, the comments from Envision Berwick, we can talk about that now, in limiting, you know, building permits, I've seen that done in towns, and it's not very successful, and, you know, stifles growth in a town. And if, if somebody said, you know, this town is growing so fast that we're overburdening the fire department, we're overburdening the school system, okay, I could see that, but all indications that I've seen so far is that none of that is happening. We're not putting a burden on the, on the sewer district, not putting a burden on the schools, on the fire department, on the police department, so why would we...
You left out one key one, though, and it's the water department, and we, we've had those discussions, and I think that's a, a big one, that we, we do have to, we can't bury our head in the sand when it comes to basic needs and, and being able to support growth. And, and I'm not averse to the growth, but when we went how many months where, you know, basic human necessity, potable water, was not available to our, our residents, that was huge.
That's two separate issues, right? The issue of that there were some malfunctions and some things going on at the water department that was not correct, right, you know, somebody dropped the ball, or something, something happened there, but that doesn't mean that we're burdening on the water supply at the current rate of growth. And I, being a developer, that's one of the things that we have to look at every project, and, you know, we have to talk to the water department, and everything that I've seen to date is that, you know, we're at very low capacity, I mean, very low usage of our overall capacity. The sewer district has said multiple times that they have a whole nother station, they haven't even fired up yet. So I, I just think that, that, you know, having that information in front of us to look at, to make those decisions, makes more sense to me than just going on a, a feeling, or...
Correct.
We've asked for that over the past year, and now we have it, so we know.
We have not gotten it in writing. There's been some emails back and forth, like, oh yeah, they said this, but I think what we're looking for is a commitment.
Like the water tower holds a million gallons, and it doesn't even get low pressure until it's used over 600,000 gallons, and that's...
But where is that, where is that in writing for us to be able to make?
From what I remember.
Business-based decisions.
From what I remember, we use 300,000 gallons.
Yeah, we use about 300,000.
So, with, with no disrespect to anybody intended, I don't, and I say that in case anybody from Main Water is watching, the water district, I think Main Water has put in writing about as committal as they're going to, which is, we have ample capacity. And they want to, they, like, the sewer department, they have ample capacity, and that's all they're going to say. They're not going to estimate how much, and I think that has to do with their ever-changing systems, but that's why each project, as it comes forward, is, has to show that they have consulted Main Water and the sewer department required, because they have to be able to show that, and that...
But if they're getting the same standard canned answer of, sure, we have capacity, and I'm not, I'm not poking at anybody, but what I'm saying is, if we can't get, it's just planning, that's what we're charged to do, to do, and if we don't know what that capacity is, and we're getting...
That's when we get out of the scope of the planning board.
Yeah.
All, it's all compartmentalized, and when water says it's okay, that's all the planning board's looking for. It's just like with the fire, it's just like with the police.
May I play devil's advocate here?
Yeah.
Part of the problem, I think, with that, Mr. Vice Chair, is the fact that they might be able to say, okay, you know what, we can handle, let's, just for ease, ease of use, we can handle another thousand households, how many bedroom households, how many of them can go to planning, how many of them can be AD use that Irish can permit, that all these things that are without, outside of the planning board's purview and scope to even review. They can't really give you guys a number of units that you can give, because it varies based on bedroom size, businesses, every business has a different use capacity.
So is it beyond, is it beyond the scope of a reasonable ask that we have some type of a planning matrix, where, I mean, there was, there was a period in time that we were not able to deliver clean water to the people we serve? So...
I think that's beyond the board.
Yeah, drought, drought times.
I think that's beyond the board's ability to request, because what you'd be doing is asking, you know, an organization to try and answer to a slew of unknown variables that come before.
So it's an ambiguous number that we live to, is what I'm saying.
No, it's a, it's an ever-changing number that you live to, because when, so, everything that's come between, well, I'm going to, I'm going to pick on Les here, so Les came before you with Norman Court. He had to go to the water district and say, all right, water, sewer, this is what I want to do, can you handle it? And they had to tell him yes or no. Well, in between then and now, the number of things that I've approved that have gone on, you know, that changes things. So, the, the number they were utilizing, the all their numbers they were working with when Les was there for Norman Court, not the same as what Terry's going to be here for, you know, Farwick Acres for next week. It's just not going to, it's always going to change, so they can't actually give you anything that's going to make sense in the long run for you to actually work off of, I don't think.
I think what we're all trying to say, in one way or another, I know from my standpoint, when they say, okay, yeah, we can support this project, okay, how many of those projects can we support before the town infrastructure has to be changed and additional funding has to be...
Well, that goes through the board's selectmen. That goes through the board's selectmen, all those issues, because they do have an annual report that the water district has to, same with sewer, they all go through the selectmen and they have these reports.
And I understand that you're asking that, Jerry, but the answer remains the same. They can't tell you, you can do X many projects, because how many bedrooms, how many washer machines, how many, you know...
They just go by usage.
How many businesses are going to be there? How many businesses are going to be there?
With all due respect, there is statistical analysis, that it's not a mystery, it's not pie in the sky, it's, you know, it's, it's empirical data, and that can be used based on historical and current usage. So, it isn't, oh gee, I don't know, it looks like it's okay. We really, somebody's got to do those, and maybe they do, they just don't share it.
They do that when each project, they do that when each project is brought before them. They factor that on there.
So, so when the next project is brought before them, do they then say, okay, here's the ones we've approved already, and that's, you know, what we're expecting to come online within the next 18 to 24 months, and therefore this is added to that? Do they do that? I mean, I would love to know how they, how they do their math.
I have a thought, and with, from my standpoint, I mean, I love data, I love numbers, knowledge, and information is critical. And, and looking for a specific household number, bedroom number, gallons per minute number, capacity number, is going to be difficult.
Yes.
But what I would like to see perhaps, is more of a percentage number. We are at only 20% of our, our capacity to run a water in this town, or...
We've been asking for that for about a year.
So, so more of a just percentage guess. I don't think we can get down to the gallon, but I think that we can get, like, we're, like, we don't even have another station open, we have a whole nother station we can do, so we're not even at 50% capacity. Some kind of knowledge like that, I think, would make me feel better to know that we're not even close to running dry in the well, kind of thing.
I think that that information has been provided, but not...
Yeah, it's about 30%.
The water, right?
Yeah, the water.
The water, they say, we're at about 30%.
The sewer's not even close to 50%.
I, I think, I wonder, my question would be, I wonder if it's part of the comprehensive plan, if we said, you know, look, historically, over the last 10 years, we've grown at a rate of 6%, and if we continue on that trajectory, in 15 years, we're going to need a bigger water supply, or bigger sewer district, right? You know, that would be, if, if, if it's possible to attain something like that, would be ideal, because the, the thought of, you know, stifening growth for no reason... you know, stifling growth for no reason-
Well, even with the last joint meeting that we had, when Les and I and Don was there, the growth projected in the 90s, we were supposed to be over 10,000 residents.
Right, that was Tom, I think Tom was talking about that, right?
Yeah. And we're at 8,600.
And that, and that's why I, that's why I thought the thing, you know, when he was saying that, I'm like, you know, all the data that I've seen, all the growth stuff up on the wall there indicates that we're not even growing at any accelerated rate. It seems like we're exploding on the scene. I mean, it seems like we got developments going on everywhere, but the data says different. You know, the data says how many students are in school, you know, so, so our perception, because, because we see every project, right? The perception of somebody, because a development gets built in their backyard, is that, you know, we're, we're exploding. And the data just doesn't support that. So-
Well, and there's a lot of cluster divisions too, so you see all the houses right up against the road.
Right.
You know, so it looks like the town's got a billion houses, but you go up in a plane and you look down, it's all forest.
Yep, it's all green, yep.
And I'll, I'll also mention that, you know, years ago, I don't remember the exact date, but maybe 2005, when I built my house in North Berwick, North Berwick had a moratorium on building permits, and they limited the number of building permits. And Berwick said, you know what, we're gonna lift the moratorium, build whatever you want for houses. And in North Berwick, when I got my building permit, there was literally a lottery system. You went in there, there were, I don't remember the exact number, but 36 of us, and there were 33 permits issued that year. And everybody, you know, called a number, you got a permit, or you didn't. And to what end? You know, in Berwick, they lifted the moratorium, I lived in North Berwick then, and it didn't collapse the town. So I, I'd need to see a, you know, a reason beyond, it seems like we're growing too fast, for me to be in favor of any type of limiting growth. If you, if somebody presented that to me and said-
I, I think where a lot of issue is, is they want to limit outside growth. They want to limit growth in our three zones and more residential areas, and try to promote the growth downtown. The thing is, like you said before in recent meetings, is the density needs to change. You know, if we, if we want the people to congregate towards downtown, we need to make it so more people can live downtown. Hence, like, we're building the edge, but even like when it comes down to apartment buildings around here, like, apartment buildings should be able to be bigger on a lot in downtown, so that way we can fit more people downtown.
Yeah. And, and I'm going to submit something before the 14th. Basically, I'm gonna take the excerpt from North Berwick's land use ordinance, where they have overlay districts, which changes the density from, I don't know, 10,000 square feet on public water and sewer to 2,500 square feet. So, you know, on a, on a half acre lot, you could theoretically get eight units. And if you think about, an eight unit apartment building is not that big of a footprint, really, with parking, you know?
Yep.
So, so something like that may make sense for us, and that's gonna be my proposal. The other thing I would say about, you know, when he was talking about R3, I get that, right? Like, you know, a, a town, and my, the way I look at it is, a town is planned like a wagon wheel, right? So you look at the hub, look at how closely populated those spokes are. And as you get out, right, they're, they're more sparsely populated, more area. We already have pretty stringent regulations in R3, and in R2, without town, water, and sewer, right? What is it, three building permits per year?
Yep.
In a subdivision, so-
Yes.
So, you know, we already have tight regulations to slow that growth in those areas. And that's why we don't see a lot of subdivisions in R3, because from a developer's standpoint, it doesn't make sense to, you know, spend four, $500,000 for a piece of land, and hundreds of thousands of dollars to get a little bit of road and to sell three houses. So I, I think that's already in play. Um, but yeah, again, to, to really, for me, to be on board with limiting any of that growth, I'd have to see data that suggests that would be healthy for the town, or the growth rate we're at is unhealthy.
May I, may I for a minute, just circle back around?
I was just gonna comment about that graph right there.
You can do that real quick, but just because I want to make sure that Mr. Roy knows that he was heard. I will email James and the sewer department, see if I can at least get a percentage of capacity.
I think that's a-
I don't know if they'll give us anything, I make no promises and no putting my head on the chopping block, if they tell me to go-
No, we're not asking anybody to do that, but I think what we have asked for in the past is the percentage, where we're at on that percentage. But also, and I think it's important, that, you know, the sewage department has gone on the record formally and said, we're good. The water department, not so much. And I, and I, I'm not trying to hold anybody's feet to the fire, but our feet are being held to the fire for, you know, reasonable development. We, we did have a water issue. And, and regardless of what caused that, we, we can't bury our heads in the sand about that issue. And I don't think it's unreasonable to ask them, what is your current capacity, what is your future capacity?
I'll read that again.
And what's your, what is your demand signal gonna be for you to say, we, we need to expand, or we need to stop, we're not gonna have enough water? I, I just, that's the responsible thing for us to do as, as a board.
I will email again, and see what I can do, okay?
I think, I think one of the, one of the things to consider with that conversation is also that, you know, what percentage of the developments come in here that are not on the town water supply?
Correct. Yeah. It's majority of R2 and R3, almost all of R3.
Yeah.
I don't know many.
Private water and sewer, right, private water and-
Yep.
So I, I think as a way forward, if I, if I may, Mr. Chair, we, we have these lists that, that were provided to us, and, and these are great, and, and it's a lot to digest. If we each digest this and come up with our top 10, and then when we come back, we compile and find out what our priorities are, then we were holding ourselves accountable to, to some forward momentum on this in particular. But in the interim, if we could get a chop from James or Legal on what is appropriate and not appropriate for us to attack, so we're not wasting our, our efforts.
Yeah.
But I think if we could each pick our top 10, and when we convene next time-
I don't even think we have 10.
We absolutely have more than that.
Well, some of them are statements like, lighting on around Lyman Street, that would be wonderful. That's not the purview of the planning board.
Yeah, but you're gonna, you're gonna see a few that I'm gonna float through Hannah.
Yeah.
But, so, wait, who am I emailing? Oh, Phil and James. Okay. I had to, I had to stop and think, I started writing and then started talking.
If you look at the, this bottom of the suggestions, this is, this is from our office. You can always do something like this, literally, that short, that brief.
Yep.
You know? I did feel like I should share people's entire emails.
Absolutely.
Especially initially, right? But now you can feel free to go through them and, and mark them up.
Look, the only thing I want to know is-
I'm super excited to see people engage, engage in the process, it's huge.
I just want to know if I need to read them out loud, or are we skipping them right now?
Not today.
Okay.
Do we want to, when we reconvene, everybody prioritize what your top five or 10 are, and let's make that our focus, so we're, we're not losing track of this and we miss the mark for the election.
So, to be clear, the process for us, we're gonna discuss, review, figure out what we think are good quote-unquote recommendations. We may or may not have another joint meeting. We will likely present something to the select-
We won't have another joint meeting.
Okay, so our recommendations, though, will be sent to the selectmen?
Yeah, I, I'd go and-
You do that? And then you, they review and discuss?
Or the chair at that moment, because it might be changing in January, who knows? Just saying, I'm just saying, not saying I won't do it, I'd still do it.
And then the select board will regurgitate and discuss and figure out what then goes on the ballot?
Yep.
So in-
And then it goes to the-
Then it goes to the attorney.
Legal, it goes to our town attorney to review, to make sure that we're not violating anybody's constitutional rights.
Okay.
Yeah, that's January.
So I guess in the, in the, in the, in the theme of transparency, what I'd like to say to, to Paul's point, is that there's more than one step that people can just throw an idea in. Yes, we have a deadline for us to receive these things, but selectmen meetings are open to the public.
Yep, and there's a public hearing for that.
And information should be brought to them at any time to get it out in the, in the open and on the table of what townspeople want and think. Because I, I think what Paul said was important, that, you know, we did a bunch of work and we made our recommendations, and yeah, they're one of your recommendations, but at the next step, it was out of our hands and things were just really different. And I, I'd like people to know that even though things change as they go, they still have opportunity to voice their opinion.
Mm-hmm.
And it wasn't us.
It wasn't us.
Our hands were clean.
So do we want to make a commitment on, for each of us to come back with our top five or top 10?
Right, or, or our top recommendations.
Top recommendations, and then we can target, focus on those and, and put out the best product we can.
Yep.
I would like to offer my services to the board, that if any of these kind of tickle your fancy, and you're having a hard time finding out, figuring out for yourself what ordinance might, it may pertain or might need to be changed, feel free, if it's okay with the, the chair, for you to reach out to me directly, rather than through him. But reach out to me and I'll help you find that ordinance you can tweak it.
Yeah, as long as four people, four, four members don't convene at the same time.
Email me directly, or come in one by one, please, and thank you.
Please.
But I will help you find the ordinance to which each of these pertains, if you would like, okay?
Can I just ask one question in this? I know we're talking about tabling this, but, because I'm pretty sure I know the answer. This, Dennis Jackson asked for definite definitions of steep slopes, isn't that clearly defined in the land use ordinance?
Actually, we do not appear to have a, like, specific actual definition in the definitions section of steep slopes.
That's why he's asking for it.
I did not, like, review, I know that there are-
Well, I know, I know each quoted, you know, several places that they say steep slopes. But typically, in the definitions, it would, it would have given a definition, they're not gonna define it in every paragraph.
There is nothing in our definitions.
No, he did say he reviewed it and didn't find the definition at all.
Nothing in the L U O.
Yeah, but found no definition.
There is absolutely no definition for that in the L U O. There are several definitions, in my personal opinion, is that the L U O is lacking several definitions in the definitions section.
That sounds like an easy-
That makes it user-friendly.
I agree. Is it, you know, because I, I just, I thought, you know, I've dealt with this in the past, steep slopes. And I don't know if, maybe it's just an engineering standard that spells that out, but it's interesting that it's not.
It's very interesting to me as well, that it's not covered in our L U O. It should have been defined, because it is referred to so frequently in certain areas of the law.
Because it, it is important, I mean, if you have a hilly, hilly lot or property, you know, what's a steep slope, you know?
What's steep to you may not be steep to me.
Right, right.
Yep. We need a specific definition, and actually, I'm kind of running into, it's, I, I went and looked at a little bit of excavation, I guess you could call it, down, down on Pine Hill, and, like, steep slope, it's a hell of a steep slope, but, where do you call that? Like, I got no definition, I got no teeth on it. So I'm trying to figure it out.
Well, construction is different, I think. Construction is defined, as far as I know, is a three to one. Anything beyond a three to one is a steep slope.
We need to have it in the L U O. So hey, Les, you just got yourself a job. Write a definition for steep slopes, see?
Anything over three to one.
There you go.
See how easy that works?
Bring it to the meeting.
I mean, that's a pretty standard-
That's just for R2, what's R2?
Pretty standard. Yeah, that's only in R3, though.
Well, you know, also, if you-
Okay, please do.
Yeah. If you go into what Envision Berwick put out here, in their, their last thing, uh, where they're talking about cluster developments, they, they also use the term prime agriculture land, prime forest land, and towns' prime far, uh, farmland and agricultural district. What is prime? Is there a definition of prime?
Yeah, that's-
Is there subprime too?
Yes, actually, there is.
Of course. We're not ready for primetime?
There, there actually is, whether it's called out in the L U O, I don't know, but I will look.
Okay. I was kind of talking to James with that, and he told me it's based on soil.
Film quality here?
Okay.
Oh, Hannah's talking. The state puts out a soils map, and it determines prime farmland and farmland of statewide significance, I think, are the two breakdowns. And it, it's dependent on the types of soils and how they drain and all that kind of stuff.
Forgot you were here, Hannah, sorry.
Great. I mean, another question that I brought up with James is, after a certain amount of time, that prime soil changes. Like, you give it three years, and you're having something totally different than what was grassland. You're not having grassland anymore. You now have vines, you have other types of weeds, you have, uh, quick-growing trees that all change.
Water tables change.
Yeah, the water table changes.
Yeah, I don't know how often it's updated, but-
Above my pay grade, above hers, too.
They, they use the US Geological Survey for that, you know?
Um, it's, it's a, let me see. It's Web Soil Survey. It's USDA, I think that does it.
Well, this particular one was talking about R3, so that's, uh, farm, farmland.
Yeah, it's all agriculture.
So, as long as we know that there is something considered prime farm, or I know now, there's something considered prime, and that's really something that's on some map somewhere, that's good to know.
And I think that in reading things, a lot of times I get lost in legalese, because everything it's defined. You know, you read a sentence that's supposed to say one thing, but 10 times it tells you what the words that you just read mean, which are important, right? But I don't want to get lost in it either. I mean, there are some times when I think that we can read it and get the gist of what they're talking about, but somebody else might argue, well, that's not really what I think it means, so I guess we're going back and forth, we kind of need the definitions. There's one part, and I know we're not gonna get into this, but, but there's one part in one of the things where it talks about how a tiered system of permits will help local developers, but not, not big developers. Well, okay, that's kind of a really vague way of saying, you know, right, and we have to be careful about not limiting somebody's ability to develop a land if they bought it, whether they're from Berwick or from, you know, New York, right, so-
And like how, I'll quote Tom Wright again, we need to be welcoming to all.
Well, I think, I think, we might as well just talk about some of this stuff, because I, I really, you know, this gentleman, this gentleman has, quote, uh, email, and, you know, because one of the things that we talked about with the attorney was that, you know, denying somebody's ownership of their land is denying their constitutional rights.
That's correct.
And, you know, this guy makes a really good point, the son of a farmer, same scenario Tom Wright was talking about. And, you know, he basically says in here, I can't find it right off the top, but he says in here that, you know, you basically take away the value of somebody's property.
If you can only develop a certain amount of that.
Right, so somebody has 50 acres, and a big developer might pay a million dollars for that property, but a local guy can't pay a million dollars, so you, you know, you basically take that property from that guy, you know, might be all he has in his life, it's his whole estate.
And there's first with the taxes on it, too.
First with the taxes on it. So I think that's an important piece to think about, too, you know, so.
There's a fine line.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not that bad of, you know, stopping outside development, because, you know, when I first moved to this town, you know, nobody was developing. There were very, very few developments. And what does that, does that mean?
Well, everybody has to meet the same land use.
Right.
We don't have a special for local, for special for high.
Right, right.
They're just what they are. Doesn't matter what it says on the truck, just bringing the equipment in.
Right, right.
I agree, and, and the person who's all more than selling the land is benefiting from that. And, and, and times like today where everything is crazy, high through the roof, you know?
Right, right.
It was nice to see the counter, encounter, rebellion.
Yeah, yeah.
I thought it was well written.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right, all right. So moving on now, okay, findings of facts approval. We have a bond, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
I have one question on the Wentworth Solar, uh, with regard to the Surety Bond for decommissioning and the condition. Does not specifically talk about the recalculation in the period of city, I know we've, we've talked about that before.
But I believe the state's not all that. But I believe the state states that all, right?
Is that, is it the state's?
The state has mandates that recommissioning be a certain number of percentage of money or whatever.
Yeah, it's after 15 years, I think it is, and then five, every five years after that, and.
Hannah?
Okay.
I know we talked about this when this project was approved, and I know Phil, you had asked for that to be a condition, and I'm pretty sure we ended with the conclusion that that is a requirement by the state, by some licensing, somebody, that they have to do the revaluation, so we didn't need to make it a specific condition by this board since they're already required to do it. That was why I left it off.
I'd like to make a motion that we find that complete.
Approved the findings of fact.
Approved. Is that what we're looking for?
Yeah, approve the findings of fact.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Okay, there's that one. Next is Norman Court, major subdivision, findings of fact.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Thank you, Wes.
And this one was lengthy because it was also technically a conditional use. So there's a lot of standards listed in this one. Looks different from a subdivision one.
Thank you for taking that one, Hannah.
Which all the standards have been met.
Yes.
There is no waiver.
Well, I assume these wouldn't be put in front of us unless all of the standards were met, correct?
Correct.
Hopefully, you wouldn't have approved it if.
Right, right.
I'll make a motion that we find the finding of fact.
Nope, we approve the findings of fact.
We approve the finding of fact.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right, there's that one. Next is Silver Therapeutics. Conditional use and site plan review.
And it's left for just the bigger.
The driveway, yeah, the parking lot.
The 30 cars.
And their conditions were any modifications to this site plan as approved must be reviewed and approved by the planning board, and the applicant must obtain all necessary state and local permits for construction.
Somebody, I don't want to make all the motions.
I'll make a motion that we approve the finding of facts for Silver Therapeutics.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right, there's that. Next is Navina Estates, subdivision amendment.
I'm going to recuse myself.
And this was pretty straightforward. I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of fact.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right. Next is JoJo's Cafe. JoJo Cafe, conditional use.
They're up and running, right?
Yes, they are.
Awesome.
I will make a motion to approve the findings of fact for JoJo's Cafe.
I will second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I was not here during that, so I'll not vote.
You'll abstain?
Abstain.
Okay. Next is Brian's Trailer Repair.
This one was just for the waiver for the lot size, is that?
Second employee.
For the second employee.
Second employee.
And with the land use update, he didn't need to have the more space. Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? All right, there's that. Next is the second public comment. Seeing no one's here, I'm going to close the public comment. And next is informational items. Do you have anything, Irish or Terry?
Did you want me to address that email?
Yes, please.
So I was, it was inquired of me why some of the businesses across the street have gone before the planning board and some have not, and it was brought to my attention that there was actually an email exchange. Mike has the copy of it. May I come grab it?
Yep. This is with Lee J. and James.
So I just want to grab the date off of this. So, long story short, back on December 8th of 2022, Lee J. responded that there's really nothing for the planning board to review in regards to businesses going over there because all of the things that you guys would typically review for were already reviewed by Lee J. The reason you guys did see some of the businesses over there was because James had made the decision, because he wasn't certain prior to that, he instructed Tammy, who was the planner at the time, to require those businesses to come before the board, but there's really nothing for the board to review. If they meet the ability to use, you know, use the space, then they get to use the space. So.
So how does that, and I mean, just playing devil's advocate, case in point, you know, the cafe we just approved, right? How is that different?
Because the cafe that you guys just approved, you guys had to review it, you had to, it had to come before the board so that it could go to the planners to be reviewed for things like parking and accessibility or what have you. All the little pieces that we look for to make sure that it actually complies with our ordinances. That entire site was reviewed as one big piece. So all those little pieces that you guys would typically be looking for.
Have already been met.
Have already been reviewed and approved by Lee J.
So all future businesses going in there, is that how that's going to be?
They already have the right number of parking spaces. They already have the right-sized building.
To answer your question, yes and no. Okay, it's not a definite yes because, for example, one of the things that we were talking about that James, James was actually going to float by Lee J., they may have to come back because they specified, most of the buildings, let me see if I can, I'm clear as mud, and I apologize, this is cold, it's got my whole head going. Basically, what it amounts up to is they had most of their areas, most of their buildings did not have a specified use. So, but they were all reviewed as though there were potentially any use, except this is where there's some confusion that we have to check into. They did label, for example, the point of contention right now, they labeled one particular spot to be a bank. The bank has backed out. The bank is no longer going to be there. They're looking at a convenience store. Because they specifically called out that use, we're probably going to make them come before you to change that specific use for that specific place because they specified it. But otherwise, Lee J. reviewed this as a site as a whole. And that's why there's also a condition there that before they build the last building, because the biggest thing is with this type of a development, especially when you're having commercial and residential in the same spot, is parking, right? We all know parking's a big problem. Parking takes up a lot of space. Town of Berwick is trying to get away from some of the more archaic views of parking that will leave you with big empty lots like Walmart and Home Depot have just because somebody says so. But before they can put up their last building, they do have to be, have the whole project reviewed again. And if they do not meet the parking requirements for all combined uses, then they can't put that last building up because they'll have to dedicate that space to parking or they'll have to build something for parking. So that's the kind of the convoluted long and short of it.
Question on what you said, Lynn. You say Lee J. reviewed the plans.
Well, and the planning board as well.
Yes.
It's not just Lee J.
But the plans that were reviewed did not have specifics. It had a building this many square feet with nothing in it, no businesses or anything defined. How could they know?
Well, they know that all the first floor is commercial.
I know, I'm talking about this one over here. It was just an open space.
Yep, but they, so what they did was, it's my understanding, and Hannah, correct me if I'm wrong, when they were reviewing the edge, they were reviewing it as though more towards what can, what uses would we not allow there versus what could we?
I understand what you're saying. Just if they're looking to review something, there was nothing there to review other than.
Right, I think I'm with you, and I think the question I would ask is, so it almost seems like they put this building before the planning board and they said, okay, there's going to be.
Mixed use.
Mixed use or something.
And they're going to be mixed use. So then mixed use has a category of businesses that are approved for mixed use, or I guess it's not mixed use, right?
It's commercial use.
No, mixed use would include residential.
So that could be a pizza shop, it could be a, you know, because there is, there's like a dental clinic in there.
Right, but that came before the board. That's the confusion is.
Let me read this to you directly instead of trying to summarize. I was hoping to make it a little shorter by summarizing it, but, so he says, it's important to know there is no agreement that lays it out, da-da-da. As you're aware, during the original review of the project, and this is from Lee J., by the way, during the original review of the project, I had been involved by assisting the planning board through the review process. As part of that process, the board looked at all of the aspects of the development from sewer and water layouts as well as capacity issues, traffic impacts based on full buildout as well as the parking for the entire lot. As your last planner had left, it was brought to my attention the developer and prospective businesses were being required to go to the planning board for approvals, and then I questioned why. They were uses that were proposed in existing buildings, and in this particular case, one that was already constructed. I thought it did not make sense to make a small business go through a costly process for something already been reviewed for all the impacts they could potentially create. It seems redundant to do this. As for the rest of the development, each building on the approved plan is a designated use, i.e. housing, coffee shop, bank, et cetera. It seems unless the use were to change to, say, light industrial warehouse use, it made no sense to go back through the planning board since the potential impacts have already been reviewed for a particular use and a particular structure. If the used building footprint, parking lot design, or some other aspect of the project were to change, they should come back for review. So basically, they reviewed according to Lee J.'s email, which, to some wrath, he wrote that, that, so a year ago, he stated that they existed, that building had already had all the potential existing uses, and that unless it was changed to something that would be, so when you're looking at from a planning and a code perspective, things like warehouse or industrial uses are different than any sort of retail, any sort of medical, those are different.
So it got approved for a category of businesses.
More or less, yes. It got approved for that lighter use category versus a hazardous risk.
Any checks and balances, or is it just willy-nilly whoever wants to lease a spot in there?
They have to come through me.
Public, but what about public comment, any of that stuff? Are we just foregoing all of that? It's between you and Lee J. to assess out who gets in, who doesn't get in? Because I just, to me, that, and I'm just, maybe I don't fully grasp the process, but it just seems, for lack of a better term, no process. I mean, we go through all of this, like whenever a new business wants to go into a building, they come before the board, they present, and they say, this is what we want to bring to your town, and this is why, and this is the benefit. And I think there's a lot of value in that for the viewers and the townspeople to get to know the business owner and what they're bringing.
Can I be honest with you?
Yeah.
I'm 50/50 on this one for the edge, okay? And I'm going to tell you why. Because from my end of things, something like that, and no offense, Hannah, to you or Lee J. for any of this, something like that, does it make sense to have a grouping or listing, so to speak, of approved uses? Absolutely. My problem is I don't see anywhere where those specific approved uses were called out for that development.
Right.
And that's something that I think I may request them to provide a list of what they're anticipating their proposed uses because to me, what I would do, honestly, this is the 50, that was the 50 against, the 54 is if I were guiding them through this process right now, I would tell them, give me, here's the, here's the list of approved uses in this town. You tell me what you think you might put in there so we can review it for all of them, specifically to prevent you guys from having to see each one, because here's the reality. While you might say, and yes, I get it, public comment, it's important for people to have their voices heard, if there's, if they meet all the performance standards, it's not like in a subdivision, no offense to the developers here, you know, in a subdivision, you have an opportunity for the, I know, I'll get him a lollipop after, make him feel better. In the development, you have the opportunity, we've had some great discourse between abutters and developers and developers, engineers with, you know, I'd like to see this, this makes it more palatable, et cetera. It's a business, the buildings are already built. What are they going to come and say? I don't want it in my town? Well, it's an approved use.
I just think we need to be.
You don't want it, but it doesn't mean that you guys can do anything about it.
Right.
Fair enough. I just want us to be sensitive to the optics, okay? The optics on this are, here's this new contentious development, which it is to some people in the town. I think it's a great thing for our town. The growth, the town center, it's going to be, it's going to be great. But we are delegating that process, and I have a lot of respect for Lee J. and a lot of respect for S M P D C and everything that they do for us, but we are delegating that authority and that process to somebody that does not even live in our town. And I think that the optics on that from the outside looking in, I just want us to be sensitive to that.
Well, I don't think that Lee J. or S M P D C has the say on what's the use for that, like.
Yeah, we're not reviewing any of the businesses.
Right, they're going to Irish, they're going to Irish to put a business in.
Okay.
And if it's an approved use for that area.
Like a retail, light-use commercial, it's already okayed.
Don't we have in our land use ordinance businesses that we can't have in town on Garpew that we can't have?
Yes.
So we already have a limit of, from here up, you can, you know.
Aroma Joe's, Dunkin' Donuts, a bank.
You know, if you, like, that basically is like a strip mall. So if you got a strip mall approved for retail use.
Right.
Whoever leases it, leases it.
But if you have it for retail use, and then they want to put a restaurant in there, then I would see that as having to come back in front of the planning board.
I think the bank change is important to review.
That's reasonable.
So the bank change, and just like.
Spelling it out in W terms.
Another thing.
I was trying to be clear that that's what happened.
Yeah, makes sense.
It's similar to like where, and I'm going to, I don't know if I'm going to get in poop for this, but let me throw out a new business name for you, Untrucked. When they were going in there, I was like, uh, you guys are opening when? Because you guys haven't been before the planning board, but in looking at it, that use was already an allowed use in that spot because I, unbeknownst to me, it has been a restaurant since apparently forever.
Forever.
I'm really mad that I can't eat right now because grilled cheese, they have grilled cheese truck. But that being said, if that restaurant then goes, I know, no ill will towards Untrucked, but let's say they decide they're going to relocate, they're going to move somewhere else, something happens, and somebody wants to put a storefront in there, then no, that's not the same use. They'll have to come back. So can they put in something? Yes. Can it be just all willy-nilly? No. We do have guidelines and I do have to follow them. And honestly, if there's any question, if I have any question as to whether or not that use was something that was part of the approval, not only will I refer to Lee J., but honestly, if I have to make the decision, I'd like to think you all know by now, well, you two are newer, but I think the rest of you know by now, I will always err on the side of caution. So if I'm not sure that that use should be allowed without being viewed by the planning board, I'm going to make them come here. It's my choice ultimately to force them through there unless James vetoes me. But if I refuse to issue them an occupancy for their business without them coming here, then.
I think that's one of the big things. So I have two bits of homework for, before the 14th. One is that Overly District, and the other one is to, I want to make a recommendation for being able to do administrative changes, you being able to do administrative changes versus having it back in front of a planning board for simple things.
Yeah, I want to see it. Something that I've talked with Lee J. and Hannah about, but I don't know if it's ever gotten pushed forward more, but I was hoping to go to the board.
Case in point, like a lot-line adjustment.
A lot-line adjustment or.
Could be easily done through you, and it doesn't need to involve us.
Something that staff level, but I do want to specify in case anybody feels like getting creative in writing this. I'm looking for a staff-level review, which would be myself, planning, whether that be Terry or Hannah, please fire all of the businesses. I don't want to ever be the only one making a decision unless it's only.
It needs to be collective.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you detail and spell that out, but.
I already have it from Lee J. from another municipality, so I'll, maybe I'll forward that to the board.
It's a common thing that some towns. It's a common thing that some towns do for things like minor conditional uses, you know, if you're not building a new building, you know, I'm going to go in and I want to sell, I don't know, rocks. You're not going to have, I'm going to sell rocks online, I'm not going to have customers, I'm not going to, coming into my building, I'm not going to have X, Y, Z types of, I'm not building a new building, I'm not doing a new parking lot, all that kind of stuff that typically the board would look at that application and say, okay, that doesn't apply. I think we can waive the sidewalk, things like that would go to the staff review committee. So the people who would typically be involved from the planning board meeting, like the fire, like the police, like code, like planning, they all still get to weigh in, but we don't need to go through the full planning board process to approve what the board would ultimately approve after a much lengthier thing.
Yeah, it'll cut out at least a month, if not more.
Which is what Integrity Construction just went through getting.
Right, right.
Yeah, exactly, and, and typically in those processes, there's something written into the ordinance where if at any point anybody involved in the staff level review thinks that it needs further review by the planning board, they can kick it up to the planning board, and that applicant has to come in front of the board and continue the full process that they would have otherwise.
That gives everybody, and so it's not an all-on-me, and I don't become the, I never want any, I never want to be put in a position where anybody feels like I'm the be-all, end-all of a process.
You don't want to be the dictator?
No. No, no, I can't even dictate myself for crying out loud, you want to dictate a town? I owe, what'd you say?
I said she's not like that.
I'll slip you that 50 for saying that on the way out.
All right, I think that was pretty good. Any other informational items?
I have just one, real quick one. A few months ago, we talked about not really having a strict set of rules or guidelines for the committee, for the, for the planning board to run by, for, what am I trying to think of the?
No Roberts rules.
That, yeah, we didn't, we didn't have bylaws, that's what I'm trying to say. So, if, if the board permits, I would like to put together a, a rough draft of maybe some bylaws to look at, to review, and possibly accept for the board.
Yeah, as long as it's not the whole Roberts rules order.
No, 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 it would have to be-
Have you seen that book?
I have.
It's a big book.
It won't be that.
I have it.
Yeah.
It won't be that, no, it'll be, it'll pertain only to really what we do.
Yeah.
And be simplified in English, so that we know what it means.
Yeah.
And it's just a rough draft, so that obviously it's a starting point.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
It'd be great. Okay, anything else? No, okay.
I don't think I have anything for you.
Adjournment.
There are no further items for consideration from the esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Berwick Town Hall. I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, good night.